Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, February 4th, 2019 edition of the City of Brentwood's Board of Aldermen Meeting. I would be the sitting-in acting mayor here this evening. Our regular mayor, Christopher Thornton, has a family engagement that was apparently set in place some number of months ago, and when reminded of it by his wife, he realized he had to be there. So, I am here instead, and if you'll have some patience with me, we'll try to get through this as quickly, as efficiently as possible. Not necessarily quickly, but certainly efficiently. The first item that we have, if we could, is have our pledge of allegiance.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Deputy City Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Dimmitt?
Here.
Alderman Kramer?
Present.
Alderman Leahy?
Here.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Here.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Here.
Alderman Puffka?
Here.
Alderwoman Sims?
Here.
And Alderman Weggie?
Here.
Awesome. We have Alderman Weggie is attending by teleplay here from Seattle?
Yeah.
Okay, or thereabouts, somewhere in a distant location. Technology allows this to take place, and we're happy that we can all be here. We have an agenda before us here this evening. Does anybody have a recommendation for any amendments or changes, or approval as submitted?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second?
We have a first and a second, approval on the agenda. Any questions regarding that motion? And do we need a roll call on this particular one, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Approval of the agenda, roll call. We got past that point. Do we need a roll call vote, or is this by acclamation? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you so much. We have the wonderful opportunity for a special proclamation this evening. It just so happens that we have a longstanding relationship between myself and the recipients of tonight's proclamation, and we've got the Alderwoman who also represents Ward 4, Alderwoman O'Neil, here too. And if I could, proceed with the special proclamation from the City of Brentwood and the State of Missouri. And this is a proclamation in recognition of the Brentwood Forest Condominium Association from the Community Association of the Year Award, whereas Brentwood Forest Condominium Association received the Community Association of the Year Award for 2018. And whereas the mission of the Community Association Institute, otherwise known as CAI, is to assist community associations in promoting harmony, community, and responsible leadership. And whereas the award encompasses communities that demonstrate excellence in association operations and governance by following CAI's best practices. And whereas CAI's best practices are communication, innovation, community spirit, financial stewardship, green community trendsetter, neighborhood beautification, governance leaders, reserve studies and management, and strategic planning. And whereas the Heartland Chapter of the CAI consists of 430 members, covering five states, namely Missouri, Illinois, Arkansas, Iowa, and Kansas. And whereas there are four size categories, with Brentwood Forest Condominium Association winning in the 100,000-plus unit size category. And whereas this award is voted on by the CAI Board of Directors of the Heartland Chapter, and now therefore I, Alderman Thomas Kramer, by the authority vested in me as presiding officer of the City of Brentwood, Missouri, and on behalf of the Board of Aldermen for the City of Brentwood, do hereby congratulate the Brentwood Forest Condominium Association on this recognition and demonstration of excellence in CAI's best practices, and encourage them to continue to work by following these practices in order to make this the best community possible. Presented this the fourth day of February 2019. Congratulations.
Thirty in it, too.
Congratulations once again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
And we thank you, the folks from Brentwood Forest, for being here this evening. Moving along with the agenda here this evening, this is the opportunity for citizen comments. If anybody would like to come forward and give us their name and address, now'd be the time to do so. And we'll try to go into our three-minute time limit if we have to, but please feel free to take your time. Yes, ma'am?
And I will need probably more than three minutes, and I think I deserve them for what I've been through. My name's Dawn Colnagie. Before I begin my comments, I'd like to read aloud the Brentwood Police Department's mission statement. Quote, "The mission of the Brentwood Police Department is to form a partnership with the community and improve quality of life by providing fair and impartial police services in a professional manner. The Brentwood Police Department recognizes that law enforcement is an honorable profession, and that service to our community is based on trust. The Brentwood Police Department recognizes our profound duty to uphold the public trust. We will demonstrate loyalty, trust, respect, integrity, and honesty in all of our endeavors. These values are the foundation upon which our professionalism is based." End quote. Integrity, trust, respect, professionalism. Your police department is failing to meet its mission. In the early morning hours of October 27th, 2018, off-duty Brentwood Police Officer Corporal Daniel Rettlaugh sexually assaulted me in the parking lot of the sideline bar located off of Manchester Road here in Brentwood. He violated me in the city where he works, where he is bound to profound duty to uphold the public trust. About two hours ago, I was informed that today Daniel Rettlaugh effective immediately submitted his retirement papers, and he will be collecting full retirement, and is no longer an employee. That must be nice for him, that he gets his full retirement benefit. But it's not just my rapist who has let your community down, who has let me down; so has your police chief. Chief Joe Spice Jr. called me at 11:11 a.m. on January 8th, 2019. Now, keep in mind, I'm a victim, and he knows this. I was sexually assaulted by one of his subordinates. I wanted help from the chief. I should have been treated with respect at a minimum. Instead, he made me feel worthless, insignificant, and as if his officer was more important than me. It's inexcusable in my book for a crime victim to be treated as such. In that two-minute phone call, the chief increased my level of distress fivefold with his unprofessional actions and his harshness. The chief showed a bias against me in that phone call with his overly authoritative tone of voice and his use of verbal commands, which is level two on the use-of-force chart for police officers. Verbal commands to me, to tell me, a sexual assault survivor, to be quiet and calm down when I questioned his clearly articulated statement that he would not order an internal investigation into my allegations of sexual misconduct by Corporal Rettlaugh. Chief Spice also said that St. Louis County Police Department's criminal investigation was the end of it, no more. And let me point out that Chief Spice, he should have had access to the corporal's police file, so he should have known that the corporal was at one time an instructor at the St. Louis County Municipal Police Academy, so conflict of interest. Why did he not request that the Missouri State Highway Patrol do the investigation? Back to the phone call. In that two-minute phone call, he clearly violated dozens of rules and regulations based on Chief Spice's employment contract, the Brentwood Police Procedure Manual, and the Brentwood Employee Handbook. Hence why I filed a separate complaint against Chief Spice. I know you may think that the fact that that phone call happened on the same day as the Brentwood fentanyl incident somehow mitigates his culpability. I assure you, it does not. My trauma and revictimization by Chief Spice on January 8th only compounded the distress I was already under from the sexual assault itself and the actions I had to take to hold my rapist accountable. I had to go public. I'm here tonight because I have no choice. Chief Spice's implicit and explicit gender biases personify the reasons more women do not report their sexual assaults. All three of the aforementioned documents indicate to various degrees that professional and respectful behavior is always expected, even under stressful situations, and that biases must not prevent fair and impartial treatment. Before I walked into this building tonight, Chief Spice came up to me and said, "Are you Don?" Obviously, he knows who I am. The first time I'd ever met him, he said he wanted to apologize to me. I told him the truth. An apology is not good enough. He was annoyed by that. He walked away when I tried to hold him accountable for his behavior. I did yell at his back that, talking to him that day on January 8th, he made me want to hurt myself because I was so hopeless, because no one was holding my rapist accountable. It wasn't until I talked to your city administrator and left messages for your mayor and everyone in God's creation that I could, that action was taken. Had it not been for me not giving up and not wanting my rapist to get away, Chief Spice would not have opened an investigation. And guess what? Sexual misconduct was found everywhere. It's ridiculous. You guys need a top-down reorganization of your police department. Excuse me. See, I shake now. I never shook before my sexual assault. But it's not going to stop me from speaking my piece. The police department's culture cascades from the top of the organization. Chief Joe Spice Jr. is at the top. He should show his officers what integrity is and take accountability for his actions and step down as chief of police. Brentwood does have a very fine commander in its midst. Major Angela Hawkins, she investigated the internal complaint against my rapist. She was fair, she was objective, she was empathetic. She's one badass woman. She's a role model. It wasn't until I talked to her that I finally felt like someone was listening. I've been told the investigation into my rapist is ongoing. Just because he was allowed to take his retirement, the investigation's not over, and I strongly urge the department to make sure the investigation gets completed and that it's sent to the post commission, the licensing authority for police officers in the State of Missouri. I've already made a complaint with them. However, we cannot allow Corporal Rettlaugh, excuse me, Dan Rettlaugh, to be allowed to play the municipal police hop game here in St. Louis. He can't go to North County, he can't go to some small municipality in South County. We have to take a stand together, your city and me, by not giving up and making sure his license is revoked. I seriously hope you hold the chief accountable for his actions, because the culture's bad. Based on what Dan told me, my rape happened on my second date with Dan, so I heard a lot about the department in my first date. It sounds like you guys need to clean some house and get a lot of ethics training in there, sexual harassment, and for God's sake, get some female police officers. You have two, and they're on the command staff. You have to make the change, you have to hold them accountable. And like I said, if you're looking for a leader, look to Angela Hawkins. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Would anybody else like to come forward and approach the board? Now'd be the time.
Joe Harding, 88, 81, Flamingo Court.
Hi, Joe.
Brentwood, Missouri. Hello.
Hi.
Hi, Kathy. Bowler, hello. Anyway, I've been a resident in the Central West End for 15 years, and currently a resident in Brentwood Forest for 26 years.
Way to go, Brad.
And Jardy. Anyway, I'm happy in Brentwood Forest, but I'm concerned, I don't know if this Board of Aldermen have addressed the merging of the city and the county, and if any of you have an opinion that may be as strong as mine, hopefully. But I live in Brentwood. I haven't changed my address when it automatically comes up St. Louis. I moved out of St. Louis into Brentwood on purpose. So I would like some feedback from the Board of Aldermen, particularly my Ward 4 representatives on where you stand on that issue. Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Joe. Would anybody else like to come and approach the board? Now'd be the time.
Me, I'm Carol Zuschel of 2717 Breckenridge Industrial Court. We've spoken before. The Board has been presenting the Brentwood Bound project as simply to control flooding, but I think we all know that that project isn't really about flooding, but really about redevelopment. They are promoting the flood issues so that they can push this redevelopment through. Residents have been led that they were only going to go to affected areas, and that's simply not true. We do not flood where we are and haven't in over 50 years. They are going into industrial courts and office parks and taking companies and buildings that aren't affected by flooding. The Board portrays themselves as being fair and honest to property owners. We would disagree. They devalue our properties and only want to pay us pennies and offer us nothing. Not to mention us, none of us want to relocate. We would use the words blindsided and ambushed. We ask questions and answers, and we get evasive and half-truths, and that's only when we do get an answer back, and a lot of times it takes forever. There has clearly been a lack of courtesy, respect, and diplomacy used here. Mayors have been here for over 50 years and have given many people employment, career opportunities, and health insurance. Can any of you say the same on this board? Brentwood apparently doesn't care about their businesses. I mentioned this to a friend of mine who's in development, and I said, "What are they going to do next? Go after Rock Hill on Manchester?" His response was, "No, Rock Hill values their companies and their businesses." A lot of these businesses that you're going after have been founded by World War II veterans. They've given many people opportunities. My father in particular gave two brothers from Maplewood, who had a terrible background, one had been in jail. My father took them on. You know where they are today? They're responsible adults with families. You have been dismissive and cavalier when presenting this project and forgetting that we as business owners are sitting here too. The elderly woman you have been dismissive to is my mother. She has a degree in business and accounting from Washington U. Perhaps you've heard of that university? She understands numbers and doesn't miss a thing. She's as sharp as a tack. You publicly told Mr. Frederick, Frederick Roofing, who by the way, can't be here, his son is starring for the Boston Bruins, you publicly told him that you were taking his property. You hadn't even contacted him yet. That was extremely unprofessional and disrespectful. The words here we're going to use are dumbfounded, amazed, and astonished. We have heard the word ashamed, you're really ashamed, of companies that you're ashamed of companies that have come in and supported your community. We're embarrassed for you. That is shameful. You said you wanted a legacy, and you have one right now. You are now suing a 91-year-old woman, causing a lot of worry and a loss of income. It's your legacy, not one of most decent people would want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come and address the board? Now'd be the time. Only once? All right. Thank you so much. We do appreciate your time, and we thank everyone who came forward this evening. We value all comments. And I guess the feedback I wanted to give, Joe, which we were going to bring up at the Brentwood Forest meeting tomorrow evening, you've got the, probably a 2020 November ballot issue that's going to come at the effort led by the Freeholder Movement, which is led by the Missouri Municipal League, my understanding, and that would be opposed to the Better Together Movement, which has some segmented amount of leadership, along with the financing by Rex Sinquifeld, so I understand. And speaking with the mayor about this earlier this evening, from his point of view, it's very, very premature to come to any conclusions or to try to take any actions in advance of that. One of the groups that we have supported many times in the past, both financially and also with votes and resolutions here in these chambers, is the Missouri Municipal League, led by the former mayor of the city, Pat Kelly. And the mayors of the collective municipalities in the City of Brentwood have gathered together, it would have seemed so far, in supporting the Freeholder effort, which is still in its beginning stages. But the idea is to come forward in about, once again, November 2020 with a resolution that the voters of our area and all the joining municipalities would vote upon to make that more cohesive and potentially a force to go against Better Together. That's from my point of view. If anybody on the board has a response for the comments this evening, please let me know. All right. Once again, we thank you so much for your comments this evening. We'll have another opportunity as we move forward with the meeting. And now we have the mayor and Alderman reports. The mayor's not here this evening, so we go to Ways and Means Chief David Dimmitt.
No report.
And I have no report this evening. Alderman Leahy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank the City of Brentwood. The 5th of January blood drive, we were successful collecting 72 pints of blood, and I thank those that came and gave and helped that possible. A pint of blood nowadays, it used to be one pint collected could help one person, but the science and everything now, they can take a pint of blood and stretch it to help three people. 110 people that we can help with the blood donation will make a difference. Board 3 meeting for the month of February will be Tuesday night, the 26th of February, and again, it will be at the Brentwood Rec Center, starting at 7:00 p.m. All are invited. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman. And Public Works Committee Chairperson Steve Lockmiller?
Yes, our next Public Works meeting will be next Wednesday, the 13th, right here at 4:30. And then, a quick report on the Brentwood Century Foundation, had the trivia night a couple of Fridays ago, and we had over 200 people in attendance, raised at count right now, a little over $5,000 for the December 5th fund.
Excellent.
The next event is going to be actually right here in next board meeting. We'll be recognizing several people that have lived in Brentwood for over 75 years. And, let's see, the 24th of February is a panel discussion regarding the Howard Evans Place, and that was an area where the promenade now sits. It was a historic African-American community, and some of its members that lived there will be back to talk about their memories and a little bit about that area. As far as any other events, you can always go to Brentwood100.org to get information. That's it.
Thanks, Steve. Absolutely.
Air Thornton table, may have won.
Well, there were actually three mayors in attendance, and he ended up being the smartest one in the room. So yes, he did win.
With some help, the word for people.
Yes, there you go.
Thanks, Alderman. Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes, thank you. Ward 4 meeting will be tomorrow evening at 6 o'clock in the Brentwood Forest Clubhouse, if anyone would like to attend that. And also, once again, we'd like to give a shout-out to the Public Works people who came out in the recent snowstorm and fielded us all out. They were absolutely wonderful getting the city streets cleared, so thank you very much from Brentwood Forest and everywhere else.
You're here. Public Safety Committee Chairperson Puffka?
Thank you. The Ward 1 meeting will be a week from tomorrow, Tuesday, February 12th, at 6:30 at the Rec Center. It's one of your last opportunities to wish Alderman Dimmitt well while he's still on Alderman.
Yes.
What, we're having an execution afterwards?
He doesn't know what's planned, so we're going to keep that a secret.
I think we're going to fund the Aspirin of the Month Club membership for him to take part in. Alderwoman Sims?
No report.
And Alderman Weggie?
No report.
All right, thank you so much. We're up to the city administrators portion of the meeting, and we have the Brentwood Bound update. Come on down.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Craig Schlitter with Navigate Building Solutions.
Yes, sir.
I'll be providing the update tonight for Brentwood Bound. So for investment costs, recent investment costs include the purchase of 8302 and 8304 Manchester Road, along with two East West Gateway grant deposits. Recent direct project costs include Manchester Road Improvements Design Engineering, along with environmental studies and sales tax studies. And lastly, recent indirect or sunk costs include property acquisition legal fees and community engagement fees. That is it for the update. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. With regard to the East West Gateway deposits, what do those pertain to? I mean, what are those monies being eventually going for?
Good question. So there are two grants that the city is currently targeting with East West Gateway. And if you recall, the city applied for an East West Gateway grant last year, called an STP grant for Manchester Road improvements. They awarded 1.2 million for that. We're now targeting two grants. One is for the Deer Creek Greenway Connector, another one is for the Breckenridge Industrial Court Bridge. So those would be two and three with East West Gateway grants. So the city's allowed to apply for those grants for different projects, and they have two different cycles a year. So this is the first cycle of 19, and we're strategically applying for two different projects to try to get more funds.
Right, and those kinds of efforts will be ongoing kind of throughout this process?
Yes, exactly. These are the first East West Gateway grants, because they're early in the year, they're due February 14th. But yeah, I mean, there's other grants that the design team and Brentwood are strategizing towards, other federal grants, private foundation donations, along with other partnerships. So this is the beginning of 19 efforts, and these are the first two out of the box.
It goes without saying, there was a public comment earlier tonight that Brentwood Bound was exclusively a redevelopment project, had nothing to do with anything but flood abatement or redevelopment on Manchester Road. Both of these projects had to do with infrastructure, correct?
Correct.
And that one of them has to do with the connector to the Great River Greenway.
Correct. One is solely the park and trail connector, the other is just improving the bridge at Breckenridge Industrial Court Bridge, because it gets flooded, so they're trying to update it and get it out of the flood plain.
Thanks very much for your update.
Thank you.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Craig, on those two grants, is it one or the other week could possibly be awarded? Can you win both awards?
You can win both awards. There are two different projects, two different grant submissions, so if the city were lucky enough, they could get awarded both of them.
I noticed on that table, we're not going for the full 80 of the project cost, the full 80% that you're eligible for.
Sure.
Is there a reason?
So there are so many different points in these East West Gateway grants. One of them is how much the city requests. So at some threshold, the more you request, the more points you lose. So there's a strategy on how much you request without hurting your overall point score that could reduce the chance for the city winning the grant. So for example, the Manchester Road Improvements grant that the city won last year, the city could have gone up to maybe 2 million plus on their request, but they could have lost it, because when you went above the 1.2 million, you lost points, every $100,000 or so. So the city and the design team and Navigate all sat around and strategized what that correct amount was, because it's better to win one... because it's better to win 1.2 million rather than zero. So the same with these two grants. This is the maximum amount that we feel the city could have the best chance to win without hurting the points that get awarded. Does that answer your question?
If I may interject, we also have in the audience Phil Blonde with Jacobs Engineering. And if it's okay for him to approach the podium. So this process allows for a preliminary meeting with East West Gateway, if you want to talk through that process as well.
Yes, so we met with East West Gateway and then got their feedback on our preliminary application. And we did submit preliminary applications prior to this process. So then the next application's due on February 14th.
The point of the preliminary meeting was to review, they have a bunch of different people from MODOT St. Louis County, Trailnet, members of East West Gateway at this meeting as well. So they give us feedback on maybe what we can do to strengthen our application and if it warrants submitting both. So just wanted to explain that process as well.
Yeah, the point is, we've already gotten some feedback from East West Gateway and incorporated that into the applications. And they spoke specifically to applying for both and encouraged us to apply for both.
Excellent. Any questions for Phil? Alderman Leahy.
I have a question both for Phil and I guess for the city administrator and the city attorney. It is my impression, the reason we need to take the Breckenridge Bridge out is because at that location, we are widening the Black Creek area. And thus, the current bridge wouldn't span that whole area. Because if we widen the banks out, the bridge is too small. My question is, it is my understanding that the Breckenridge Bridge is not owned by the city, but is owned as a private entity. Thus, I'm questioning how we can go in and get funds to fund a private bridge replacement. Help me understand this.
Well, you can apply for funds, and I think, once you build the new bridge, it will be a public bridge.
We don't, if I'm not mistaken, we don't own the Breckenridge roadway. We don't.
I can't confirm or deny it.
This is where I've raised the question before to work with. And I understand we have limitations that we may not use public money for private projects to work with. So I'm questioning how we maneuver around this limitation to work with. I understand why we need to take the bridge out because we're widening the creek, and that's a city action. But at the same token, I'm not 100% sure how we get to use funds for putting the bridge back in if we don't own it. And I'm surprised that at this point in all of the research and everything, that you're looking at me like, that's not the case?
Or have we had discussions on this and somebody knows how to make this problem go away? Well, we can look into this.
The proposal due on the 14th of this month.
So far, we have not considered this a problem. We've been going forward, therefore, we believe the city has standing to improve the bridge as a part of the Deer Creek mitigation.
That's what we believe. My problem is, is all the regulations tell us that that's not the case.
You're the one saying that. I don't have any other proof.
Am I not correct, Mr. O'Keefe, that we may not use public money to improve private property? Simple question. Cannot use public funds for a private purpose? If the bridge is owned privately? Again, I do not know the facts. I have not been intimately involved with the Brentwood Bound projects. I do not have the research on the ownership of property. But if we are, it is necessary to, for instance, widen the creek in order to accommodate flood remediation, then it would be appropriate to use public funds to compensate the roadway owner to put them back in a condition that they were in before, which is they had a bridge that spanned the creek. So it would be appropriate to spend public funds to restore a bridge, which we made non-functional by widening the creek.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions?
So additional update, we did submit the Klohmore application, and you did receive an email receipt that, could you provide an update quickly?
So, yeah, at the last Board of Alderman meeting, we informed you that we did submit the Klohmore application. And so shortly after that, we got response from FEMA that they received our application. So their review process has begun.
Good.
Thank you. And finally, last week, the city closed on 8303, 8304 Manchester Road, which is the Two Circle properties. So the city is now the owner of those two parcels.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions regarding those topics? Thank you very much. Thanks, Phil. Thanks, everybody.
Oh, excuse me, we have one more I forgot on here. If, Alderman Kramer, you would recognize Dan to give an update on the McKnight Road Intergovernmental Agreement?
I was headed there next.
Oh, you were?
In your package, you should have information on the McKnight Road. It's both the study, and if you recall, there were some modifications made to the Intergovernmental Agreement. That agreement went before the LDU Council. The LDU Council voted in favor of it, signed it, sent it back. So we should be able to move forward with that. I don't know if you have any specific questions. It's outlined in there as far as the financials. We should be able to get going on that crosswalk improvement.
Alderman Puffka.
I don't really have a question so much as I just wanted to thank you for all the work that you put in. I know it's from committee to this point that we're here tonight has been a long road. No pun intended, but it's a nice, it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a great enhancement to that crosswalk. And I think it's gonna provide the folks that use that crosswalk a lot more peace of mind as they do so. So thank you very much.
Alderman Dimmitt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a couple of questions that I forwarded to our city attorney this morning. And that is relating to paragraph number seven. Duration, "This agreement shall continue in effect from the date of execution until the completion of the study. Estimated completion date, mid-2019, and all applicable reimbursements have been received." My question was, the numbers, that it's referencing the study. So once the study is finished, are we gonna be permitted to continue to keep the signs there in place? And I would think the obvious answer is yes to that. But more importantly, if we don't get the construction done, if we don't change out the signs before the study is complete, will we still be able to go in there and swap out the signs? Okay, great.
Anybody else? Director Dan, thank you so much. Appreciate your time. Ladies and gentlemen, we have next on our agenda coming before us is the Consent Agenda. And it has a number of items on there, including the Standing Committee Reports, Resolution 1120.1, the minutes from the December 19th meeting, a warrant list, Resolution 1131, 1132. And we'll take an opportunity now from the board, if they'd like to have anything taken off of the Consent Agenda. Now would be the time to make that request. And if none, okay, we'll move forward here, give the folks around an idea of what we're about to vote on. The Standing Committee Reports, that's your Public Safety, Public Works, and your Ways and Means. The Resolution 1120.1 has to do with the Crossing Guard Agreement. Brentwood School District requested to renew that agreement and increase afternoon posting hours at the intersection of Brentwood Boulevard and White Avenue. That item came up with Public Safety Committee November 28th, received unanimous recommendation to approve. Agreement was presented to the Board of Alderman on December 3rd and also approved. The school district is proposed, two minor changes afterwards. Presented are the proposed updates. And that's in that resolution. Warrant list for 2018, operating budget $126,880.83. And the participation proceeds from the COP is $68,988.72. The 2019 operating budget, $23,877.57. And the COP participation proceeds, $1,776,969.40. Resolution 1131, that's the Greenway Connector Project, provides trail system extension to connect the existing Rogers Parkway Trail on the north side of Manchester Road near Mary and extend the trail southwardly past the Metro Garage, parallel to the Brentwood Boulevard, to point a connection to the existing Great Rivers Greenway Trail in Webster Groves. And finally, Resolution 1132, on the Consent Agenda, that covers the existing bridge on Breckenridge Industrial Court within the floodplain and impacts the elevation of water levels in Deer Creek. Removal and replacement of the existing bridge and roadway realignment are proposed via this resolution. To minimize cost impact to the city, a cost reimbursement application to East West Gateway is requested. And if it's approved, the cost reimbursement program could provide up to 80% reimbursement of funds. That's your Consent Agenda. Would you have a motion to approve?
Second, Your Honor.
Motion and a second. And roll call, please.
Alderman Dimmitt?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
No.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil? Alderman Puffka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Weggie?
Yes.
Thank you so much. We passed that business, and now we're gonna take up an item and bowl business. This is the Sewer Lateral Topic, Resolution Number 1084.2. Some changes, and Bola, did you want to go through, basically, we have some funding issues. Director Dan?
Yeah, I don't know if you had a chance to look at each individual attachment. What I tried to do is include the summary year over year, like basically 2013 through present. And you can kind of see the revenues versus the expenditures. You know, in recent years, that's kind of been going in the wrong direction. You know, we've had less that we've pulled in and more that we've paid out. I haven't looked at all the way back, but at least through that time period, you know, I looked at CAFRA, I looked at Fundware, pulled those numbers together, put that in the summary. And we met and talked about it in Public Works Committee. The cleaning and cabling, I know we've talked about that before, that's anywhere in the neighborhood of, say, $35,000 to $42,000 that that costs us annually. A lot of times, the blockages, you know, wipes, grease, tree roots, things that can be cabled out, sewers restored. But we're left with a bill anywhere from $95 at the low end to, I just had one today, $325. So the people, the most we can collect is $50. That's the highest assessment, and that's all we're allowed. So if for some odd reason they would ever increase it, that would help us. Or I looked at other communities that some of them charge application fees. I don't think we wanted to go in that direction, but that would be another way to try to get more revenue. But it's not gonna be a lot. It's not gonna be nowhere, you know, it's nowhere near enough to offset these increased costs. So right now, we're in the high 200s. We've been in the middle 200s, but we're only taking in around $148,000. So in order to try to seek equilibrium, we looked at cutting some of those benefits to try to offset that with the revenues. So that's what we're bringing forward, and that's what our recommendation is, but it's open for your discussion.
Bola, could you highlight again, before we take questions real briefly, what was the, there was the topic of going back in time. We've subsidized that program for a period of time. We have to pay that back now, or do we?
Well, so we now have a legal opinion from Mr. O'Keefe. If you look at the 2019 budget, to plug the difference between what we're collecting and the true cost of operating the services of Sewer Lateral Improvement, we are needing to transfer $90,000 from the general fund. General fund. And it's also included in your board packets, a legal opinion from Mr. O'Keefe that indicates that if the city does borrow money from general fund or any city fund, we need to pay that back, and he can, with interest, and he can speak to that.
Does the resolution, does the resolution address that itself, though?
No, it does not.
All right.
That's a component of this whole discussion.
All right. Any questions for Director Dan on this topic? Alderman Lockmiller.
Took this up in the Public Works Committee, and the reason for eliminating cabling is we felt that this, or at least I do, that this project is mainly for catastrophic failures. And by freeing up these funds of $35,000 to $42,000, it allows Dan to do at least another 10, possibly 10 sewer laterals that we normally wouldn't be able to do if we were paying for cabling. So that was the main reason there. And as Dan said, we only have so much revenue to work with, and expenses are going up. So we gotta limit our exposure.
Alderman Puffka.
Thank you. So at the committee level and at previous conversations, the $3,500 is an estimate as to how we could cover what we expect to be, based on past year's experience, to be the entire cost of so many catastrophic failures in the course of a calendar year.
Right.
Having to go into debt to meet the demand.
Right. That seemed to be the sweet spot, basically, to balance it out. If we went with that number, to your point, we were doing anywhere from 50 to 60 repairs, and that would help carry you throughout the course of 12 months without having to borrow.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Other questions?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Alderman Weggie.
Yeah, just a question on timing, right? So I believe that this would be retroactive to the beginning of the fiscal year, Dan, and that we need to move with some urgency to implement this because we're still operating under the old limits and cabling, correct?
Yes, we're still under operations as the old standards, as you pointed out, until the new standards are in place. And I would suggest you put an effective date, you know, looking forward, wherever you want to make it, you know, end of February, beginning of March, whatever makes sense, so we can get that advertisement out.
Alderman Weggie?
Thank you.
Alderwoman Sims.
So, you know, it's no secret that I've long been opposed to gutting this program. I think to address some of the numbers, you know, we have a $33 million budget. The allocation for this year is $215,000. That's less than 1%. So the idea that this is going to keep us from doing anything, I just don't think is supported by the numbers. I can get on board with, you know, cutting the cabling to open up money for repair to the lateral line. I did review the memo and the reference, as our attorney referred to earlier, that we'd have to pay it, quote, "pay it back." I, as an attorney, I find the statement, you know, what is it, private, what, private, public purpose, private funds, what you said earlier, packed full of terms of art, which are probably full of case law that analyzes what that means. Before we reduce what we're willing to pay to someone, the $7,000 figure to $3,500, I'd at least like to see how that's possible. What does that look like to pay it back? I mean, I'd like to plow that field before we gut this program to, you know, a smaller version of what it once was. You know, I mean, there was reference in the memo to other municipalities. For example, you know, Town and Country having, you know, being able to obtain insurance. Town and Country became a city 18 years after my house was even built. And most of these homes, my house was built in 1932. Most of these homes, you know, in Brentwood are older. Their lateral lines are older. This, you know, not being able to repair it could lead to condemnation. I mean, it could lead to all sorts of problems, particularly in my ward, who have smaller houses, people who, you know, live on more of a fixed income. I mean, this could be devastating, and I think that our citizens are, you know, in part relying on the fact that this program, you know, is a benefit to the city. You know, I'm not a senior. I don't have a dog. But I have a lateral line, and so does everyone who owns a house, you know. So I think that, you know, before we just, you know, reduce this massively, I'd like to find out. I mean, I am opposed to reducing the amount of money towards the repair. And I would like to have more than just a, you know, you know, partial paragraph in a memo as to what that would might look like. I mean, I want to know that I'm breaking the law by not having, by, you know, keeping this amount as it is before. I would like to have it completely ruled out before, you know, I abandon hope. Because I think it's a benefit that is important to the city, and I don't think it, and we can afford it. We've already allocated the money for this year. So that would be, you know, if that's a direction, or if it's a motion to table this resolution, I would like to hear more information about what that would look like and if that's even possible. And I guess I need some guidance as to formalities. I should have, like, what's the appropriate step? I mean, if that's a motion, or if that's me whistling in the wind, or, you know, what? I mean, if that's a motion, or if that's me whistling in the wind, or, you know, what? So that, okay, then that would be, only because I, I would like to hear more about why we, you know, can't have it, why we can't have it at its current amount that was voted on previously. So that, I guess that would be a motion to table the resolution for that purpose? Is that?
To understand your question, why we can't have what? Why we can't continue to provide the service
Right, so there was a
At the $50
As I under, yeah, as I understood the memo, and it was, you know, a few sentences of the memo that was circulated, there is this concern that we run at a deficit, and that the implication being is that we're using public funds for a private purpose. But it appeared to me, at least in the memo, that there was a way to thread the needle. And using public funds for a private purpose, I think, is packed full of terms that, that get, you know, interpretation. And before we, in my view, gut this program, I would like to know, I would like additional information, more than what was actually stated in the memo, as to how, how we might go about doing that. If we're in fact loaning the right hand money from the left, how, is that possible? And if, if so, what would that look like? That's what I'm looking for. So I'm, I'm looking to rule it out, honestly. I mean, if, if, if this can't be done, I'll, I'll, I'll accept that, but I, I'd like more information.
First of all, I do not have an opinion, and I'm not entitled to an opinion, as to how, how you should structure the benefits to property owners under the program. That's an economic question and a planning question for you all and staff to do. I did not say how much the city can expend on a given sewer repair and would presume to do so. Second, you are correct that the constitutional constraint of the prohibition against the expenditure of public funds for private purposes underlies a lot of the analysis that I have tried to provide to the board. But more importantly, the statute that authorizes this program specifies how it is to be operated. And it is to be operated from the funds derived from the fees assessed to property owners as approved by the voters. And it does not authorize the expenditure of any other funds. It says, if you want to have this program, and people want to pay that, you can go ahead and repair their private laterals. But it sets the constraints of operating within the amount that the voters have given you. So I think fundamentally, while, while the constitutional issue informs, I think, the General Assembly's structuring of the program under the statute, it's the statute which says, this is how the program is to operate. But I'd be happy to explore it with you at your convenience.
And if, thank, thank you, Mr. Attorney. If it's a, a political analysis as much as a legal one, my, my own, my purpose in wanting to table this resolution is I would like some additional exploration to be done. If it's, if there is a measure by which we can do this and continue to provide the amount that's currently in place in a way that, that, you know, stays within the guardrails of the lateral sewer program, I would like to explore that more than just what I have, what I have read so far for today's meeting. That's, and if, if the answer is, it can't be done, I, I'll, I'll accept that. But I'm, I, you know, I'm never able to go to the meetings at Public Safety or Public Works because it's at 4:30, I'm at work. So, you know, I, I would just like, if, if we are able to do it, if we structure a loan with interest, as has been referred to earlier, I'm, I'm just looking to rule it out with a little more analysis than what I've been provided.
As I said, I'd be happy to do that. And if you are of the views that the memorandum I provided is a political judgment, I apologize. I certainly don't intend to do that, and I certainly didn't think I was expressing that, but if that's your view of it, I apologize.
I certainly didn't mean to characterize, your, your memo was fine. It was, it picked my interest to a point where I would like some additional information. And if, if it's cobbling together an economic solution, that certainly is something that I'd like the board to think on in light of the legal opinion.
Alderwoman Sims, just to be clear, are you asking to table till the next Board of Alderman meeting, or to table and send to committee? What, what is your, what specific would you like?
Well, I'm, I guess the motion, i- is it appropriate to table it to, my, my, my goal, if I could explain my goal, and then maybe a, a motion can be fashioned. I would like to table this resolution to rule out or to explore what the circumstances would look like in terms of, you know, be it a loan program, or is there a way by which we can keep it at this $7,200 amount? Where we pay back with an overpayment? What, what does that look like? I mean, I don't know if that, if that's appropriate to go to committee or go to the next Board of Alderman meeting.
I think the committee has explored that already, and Dan can give you an executive summary of that. Because of changes in the statute, we had to take some of the properties that were paying this $50 sewer lateral fee assessment off this roll, and that's what decreased the revenue that was coming in significantly. So for instance, in 2019, we went from $194,299 to last year, 2018, to $148,000 even.
But I don't think that's her question. Her, if I understand it, her question is, we know we have a certain limit on terms of what we can charge. We know we have a statutory structure for how this program is to be put together. What we don't know is truly legally whether we have to pay this money back, one, and two, if we do, and it includes interest, what dollar figures are we talking about on the scale of what we're talking about right now, generally speaking, using our past experience? Is that?
Thank you, Alderman Plufka. The, if, just to quote, to quote the pertinent language that, that I, in the memo, per the legal opinion, the transfer of funds is permissible, but the sewer lateral revenue should be used to reimburse the general funds with interest. What does that mean? How can we do that? Is that possible? How much interest? Under what circumstances would that work? I mean, that's, that's what I'm, if it's something, I, I, I read that with a, with optimism in my heart. And if there's a way that we can do this, I would like to, I would like to explore it beyond that sentence. And so, you know, and
Right.
Your, your words were certainly more cogent than mine, so I appreciate the help.
Does the committee investigate exactly that?
That's all.
Right.
Got a question?
Yes, sir.
No, we didn't get into how that
What it would cost.
Yeah, we, we didn't get into the cost factor of carrying a loan. Well, look, let's go back. We're already going to have to fund that from 2018, we're going to have to fund it $95,000. 2019, we're going to have to throw in another 20,000, or, I'm sorry, $90,000. So you just keep building this loan on top of loan, on top of loan. I don't know, you know, you'd have to construct a payment plan and decide how then we pay back the general fund, if that's where the funds come from, out of that loan.
And I'm agreeing with you. I don't know either, so I'm wanting to find out. That's, that's the point, that, hence my motion to table it, to see if we can find out.
Terms of tabling it, Madam City Administrator, is that something that you believe, on this particular topic that the Alderwoman is asking about, can we get that information in time for the packet for the next Board of Alderman meeting?
That analysis
Has been provided. Perhaps I could help.
Please.
As I've tried to outline, the question is whether the propriety of the city using general revenue, tax dollars, to support a program designed to operate on its own revenue stream. There is nothing inappropriate to the city loaning funds to that, for that purpose. But if they are not paid back, then you have used general revenue for a purpose not foreseen by the statute. The question of paying interest is simply that if you're going to use the taxpayer's dollar, if you could leave it in the bank and earn 1.5% interest on it, and instead you take it out and put it in this fund and get zero, are you being appropriate stewards of the tax dollars that you have diverted from savings or from earning interest to a non-earning interest? I think you can certainly pay a competitive or even a superior interest, and then what you would find in the marketplace as a way of, of legitimizing the transaction. But it does contemplate that ultimately, the capital is repaid.
Alderwoman Sims, are you still wishing?
I, I mean, and is it, are we certain that it's a private purpose? I mean, has that? I've not seen any case law on it or statutory. I mean, I, the whole, the whole, like, is it a private purpose? I mean, obviously, they're public funds, underwater. I mean, I'm looking for, you know, something more than what I've read to, to ensure that this, you know, hope has been abandoned here.
I do not doubt that there can be those who would fashion an argument that there is a public health purpose to be served by using public funds to repair private lateral damage, which causes damage to the environment and the health of the community. That's an argument that can be made. Unfortunately, it has been answered by the General Assembly, which said, if cities want to repair private sewer laterals, do it this way. We are a fourth-class city, and we are compelled to operate to the extent authorized and in the manner authorized by the General Assembly. And they have said, this is what you do if you want to repair. I will tell you that before that program, no city in the state repaired private sewer laterals. Which is a fairly good indication, that, that I'm aware of. There were certainly no programs operating by which municipal governments were preparing, repairing private laterals. And that is because of the longstanding principle that the connection to the, that the utility connection is public only to the point where it's accessed by the private service line. Same is true of water lines. And they operate, they cross under private property to serve a private purpose. They're not serving a public purpose, those lines. They serve a private purpose of sanitation and water in the, in the private property. But, so until this program was created as some device to at least pool funds to address the kind of problem that can result when private laterals fail, there was no program for any funds to, to repair private laterals that I am aware of. Fairly good indication that it was considered a private problem.
Alderwoman Sims?
Were we just lucky in the years past? How is it?
We collected a lot of money from people who weren't eligible for the program.
But we also had
Year after year.
But we also had an unlimited amount of, you know, if the bill was $5,000, $20,000, $15,000, we paid it. I mean, it, this, it routinely, over time, came in over budget, over the revenue. And were, were we just lucky? I mean, how is it it was okay then and is not okay now? And then, and in follow-up to that
I'm not expressing an opinion on propriety, current, past, or future. I've just expressed my opinion of the analysis that I was asked to provide. But, I mean, fundamentally, the program benefited from an awful lot of people putting in an awful lot of money and getting zero benefit from it. And we were able, therefore, to fund what is apparently a very generous program of, funding for private laterals.
And I just have one more follow-up question.
Right.
What, what do cities do who, who come in over, in your experience, who face this issue? I mean, it's my understanding that there are certain cities that, you know, charge more, will have a bigger, hardier amount they'll reimburse for, they have nothing at all, you know, it ranges. If they come in over
Everybody's different, the age of the infrastructure, the distance of setback can affect how long lateral lines are, how much exposure to risk there is, how old they are. It, it varies from location to location. To the best of my knowledge, cities that require an infusion of cash in a given fiscal year borrow the money from general fund and pay it back. Or, and they also cut off the program at the, many do cut off the program September, October, November, and say, you'll have to, we can't repair it until next year.
Well, if they borrow, how, if they're borrow, how do they borrow it and pay it back?
They are in a cycle where they get their funds in January, use them up. If they're gone come September, they loan themselves some front money, and then come January, they pay it back.
Next proceeds come in.
Right, because all the funds for this program come in at end of December and the month of January.
Is, is that not something we can do?
That's just what we were talking about.
Right, it is something to talk about, but, but didn't, didn't Alderman Lockmiller explain that it was going to be compounding itself year after year?
We're going to have a shortfall year after year after year to the point where this program will just be collecting money to pay back past years. It won't be doing any sewer work.
Sims, even if we double from 50 to 100, we still wouldn't be able to catch up very quickly.
Statute sets it
I understand, but even if it was doubled
Originally set at $28, by the way.
Alderwoman Sims, I apologize. You have a motion on the floor, though. Yes, she does.
Yeah, but there hasn't been a second yet.
There's a motion to table.
I, I doesn't have a second.
Yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a first and a second.
Do you have a discussion on it that I?
And that is to table it until the next Board of Alderman meeting? And assumably, there are more data could be collected in the interim. Is that okay? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Motion and a second. May we have roll call on that motion, please?
Alderman Dimmitt?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
No.
Alderman Lockmiller?
No.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
No.
Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
And Alderman Weggie?
No.
Boy, you lost me on the vote count there.
Four. I think it's four, four.
Oh, boy. I know what that means.
Somebody have Chris's number?
He can't vote.
Yeah, I do. All vote in favor. So between now and then
I thought you did before.
Breaks the tie.
Yeah, I can break the tie.
What, no originally?
I voted yes.
Right.
Yes.
Oh, okay, so it's four to three. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
All right. Correct me if I'm wrong. Have a tie? Did we not have a tie?
No, we have four, three.
Alderman Dimmitt, yes. Alderman Kramer, yes. Lockmiller, no. Alderwin
Yes. I was yes. Three, three. Nope, it's four, three. I was yes. It was Brandon that was no.
Brandon was no.
Correct.
It was four, four.
Mr. Chairman
So between, does it tie? Just one second, just for clarification. So
You voted I to break the tie?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Motion carries.
He gets to vote twice?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Very good.
Madam City Administrator, just to clarify, and/or Mr. City Attorney, between now and the next meeting, could, if there is something that you haven't covered, or that the committee hasn't covered, that Alderwoman Sims is asking for, could you please visit and, and supply that information?
I have every intent to track down Alderwoman Sims
Okay.
And satisfy her everything, sir, before the night is over.
Thank you. Alderman Leahy?
Mr. City Attorney, the following question, as long as we're researching. It is my understanding that the only way the lateral sewer program could repay the loan from the general revenue has to come from the revenue collected to work with. So if we terminated that program before that bill was paid off, what would happen? Can you research that? No, sir. You'd have to ask the auditor that, that question.
Okay. Understand. Alderwoman Lock, Alderman Lockmiller?
No, you, it was
There are seven votes cast, or eight votes cast.
Eight votes cast.
He gets to cast
He would vote twice.
He breaks the tie.
Brandon Weggie voted as well.
Yeah. He's got, he's got two hats.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Right. He voted then, and then he voted now. I know, it took me a minute to figure it out, too. I was like, wait a minute, what?
He votes twice. I'm still bad, wait a minute, now I'm confused.
I know.
Because when I occupy the chairman's seat, I don't give up my right to vote as an alderperson. an alderperson.
But he can also break the tie as the presiding-
But I can also break the tie.
Can't vote twice.
Did.
Yes.
I know he did, I wasn't sure that was legal.
I have no malice or any ill intent with doing so, but I took that, I took the topic because it was presented.
All right.
Thanks, Director Dan.
Okay.
We'll see you at the next meeting for sure. So, we are up to new business, believe it or not, and also, it's possible, as I, just going back to the sewer lateral topic, I don't know if the Municipal League has entertained this, but we're, we are indeed fortunate to have the chairman of the Municipal League here this evening, and perhaps during public comment, he can answer about this, but were the board to put together a resolution, or the Municipal League to send communication, maybe they already have, and we could hear about plans to do so, to the legislature pleading for an increase in that $50 amount, that would be helpful, because it's extremely outdated and obsolete by its number. So perhaps we could, as a body, put together a resolution and send that forward, maybe the Municipal League has one planned, or they could do that as well, and maybe we could hear about that. If our, if Mr. Chairman would comment on that possibly in a moment or two. New Business Bill Number 623.1. Mr. Turn, City Attorney, will we please have the first reading of that bill by title only?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Sim.
Okay. Take your time.
This is point one.
Bill Number 623, 6231.1, first reading. An ordinance establishing compensation for members of the Board of Aldermen, providing for the repeal of all conflicting ordinances, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance.
And the synopsis, this comes from the Ways and Means Committee, they recommended a, or at least brought forward to the Board of Aldermen, perhaps with a recommendation, the compensation adjustment for the Board of Aldermen at the 50 percentile, an annual compensation of $4,200, $350 per month is proposed. Most recent pay adjustment was approved back in April 2007 at $7,200, $600 per month. In October 1997, the Board of Aldermen annual compensation was set back then at $5,100, or $425 per month. Chapter 110, Article 3, Division 1, Section 110.200, the Municipal Code states in part, "The Board of Aldermen shall fix the compensation of all officers and employees on an annual basis in connection with its adoption of the city's annual budget." And I believe, Alderman Wiggy, you brought this forward, if you have a presentation or something you'd like to say, sir, please.
Yeah, so I sent a memo to the board, and it should be included in the public materials for tonight's meeting with my rationale for this. But basically, it comes down to, you know, we are compensated at the highest amount of all the comparator cities and have been for 12 years. I view this as inconsistent with our compensation philosophy, and, you know, I wouldn't expect other councils to increase their compensation anytime soon to bring us into compliance. The second reason is just that this is an opportunity for us to demonstrate financial leadership. As we're moving into Brentwood bound, as we're taking on significant debt in the city, and we are going to be scrutinizing all financial activity, I would say even more than we normally do in that context, and I think this is an opportunity for us to demonstrate leadership by doing it ourselves first. I would like to, I propose going further than the 75th percentile, just as a demonstration of our commitment to financial compliance, I guess, going forward. In terms of timing, the way the ordinances are written, this would only, if this is passed, it would go into effect for the people running in the April election, and then would pick up for the next election. So you cannot change the compensation of a councilperson during their term.
Or interim.
That's it.
Would anybody like to comment or ask questions about this particular? Alderman Lockmiller.
My question is for the City Administrator. When we were going through and coming up with our compensation program, any of the employees, if I remember correctly, quite a few were capped, but none of the employees were cut.
That is correct. No employee compensation was cut.
And looking at, I guess there is a chart here comparing us to other cities, there's different forms of cities and how they govern themselves, and I guess there's different ways, amount of time they put in, depending on what, if they're a third-class city, home rule, or whatever. But when Ms. Higbee looked at each task or each position, she, and tried to compare us to the other 13 cities, she painstakingly tried to figure out what the scope of work was for each position to compare it to that city.
Did one-on-one interviews with representative employees for all full-time positions, this was done in August of 2014. So for example, employees that had similar position titles, police officers, firefighters, maintenance worker ones, she met with each one of them, reviewed duties and responsibilities, skills necessary to do the job, qualifications, and she did that also with positions where we had an incumbent. For instance, it could be finance director, planning and development director, positions like that. And then developed job descriptions, and then sent those to our comparator cities to make sure that there was a match for each one of those positions. Then we began the compensation survey.
I guess, I just, to Mr. O'Keefe, you know, I really don't know when it's, if you're a home-rule city, as a councilman or an alderman, are those different types of cities, the way they're governed, usually require different amounts of time by councilmen or aldermen or?
I do not have data on the amount of time that legislators in the various cities spend on their task, and my guess is it varies from legislator to legislator.
Much time you want to put into the job.
Right. I think it'll take all you'll give it.
That's for sure.
So I don't know that I can answer that. I think probably in general, elected officials in communities that do not have professional management probably spend a little more time at nuts-and-bolts activities for the city than is the case in cities with professional management. Generally speaking, someone's doing the day-to-day work, no matter who they are, but, so I, you know, it varies by individual.
Thank you.
Other questions? Other comments? Alderwoman O'Neil.
What question? When the city first began looking at comparative cities for compensation plans, apparently the Board of Aldermen and mayor were not included in that study. Can you tell me why not?
They were. We did, we collected data on compensation and benefits, so that's included in the first report. And in addition to that, the Missouri Municipal League also does a survey, I believe they do it every year, so, and other cities, I just got another one from Creve Court. So people do that, and that's in our report.
So when we, can I follow up, please?
Mr. Mayor.
When we had the results of Ms. Higbee's study this last year, it included the 12-step program and the seven-step program. I don't remember ever seeing-
It was, it did not include, so the second time, it did not include the elected official survey, but when we did it the first time in 2014, it did.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? Alderman Leahy.
If I may, I'd like to ask a question of Alderman Wiggy. Mr. Wiggy, I'm a little confused and need some help to put my arms around this. You would like to do this to set an example by the elected officials. I'm curious, you did not include the mayor's position, the judge position, the board of adjustment, the planning and zoning, or the city prosecutor's positions in your request to drop back. Is there a reason why?
There is not. So this is an opportunity to demonstrate leadership. I'm always speaking to the aldermen because we set the financial tone of the city.
If I am not mistaken, you, with a second from Mr. Plufka, back in June, asked us to disregard the compensation study and move the firefighters and police to a 95% increase instead of a 75% pay arrangement. Does this not go at opposite ends of what you were trying to accomplish tonight?
You are correct, and I seconded that, and while I don't think it's germane to this conversation, I will answer the question. The reason I voted for that is because I thought the prop P was a clear mandate from our citizens that we wanted higher compensation for our public safety officials.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anybody else? Alderman Plufka.
Yeah, I feel I have to respond to the disregarding of the compensation plan comment by my fellow aldermen. We did not disregard the compensation plan. We were within the compensation plan, specifically at the 90th percentile of that same compensation plan. And secondly, I would echo Mr. Wiggy's comment with regard to how applicable the question was, but to my mind, I'd like to try to answer it as well. When we're talking about compensation for the 100 or so full-time employees and 100 and so or so part-time employees of the city, we're talking about compensation so that they can put food on the table, raise their families, put their kids through school, and do all of those things. I don't know anybody that's up here on this dais that's raising a family on $7,000 a year. It's not the same type of compensation. It is just not. It's not, shouldn't be viewed the same way, and it shouldn't be viewed against the same barometer. It should be viewed against the barometer of, you want people in this position who sit in these, in these seats, who are willing to take time away from their church and other philanthropic efforts, and other efforts that occupy their time coaching their kids and spending time with their families, and the money that we want to pay them is money to say, we recognize the fact that you are taking, setting aside time that you would otherwise use in those endeavors, and we're asking you to give some time to the city of Brentwood. And that's, that's the philosophical difference, and there is not a corollary between the 70, between the concept for why we want to pay our employees the way we pay them on a competitive basis, and why I would like to pay our fire and police people a lot more than we do. There's just no comparison between that and the philosophy of why we pay aldermen. Thank you.
Alderman Leahy, and we're going to try as best we can to stay on this particular topic, and on the question side, I know this is going to, this is the first reading, it's going to come up at the next Board of Aldermen meeting, and that's where a lot of discussion will take place. But Alderman Leahy, please go ahead.
I like Mr. Plufka's response. I think it's very appropriate. In the tone of what he would like us to look at, a little historical, if I can, if we can go back to 2007, Mr. Alderman Golfen proposed with a second from Alderman Cross to raise the pay at that time to the level that we're currently at, because we went through two election cycles where we had no other people stepping forward to want to serve on the board, other than the eight members that were on the board. It has been brought to my attention this evening, I thought we had already had two cycles this current run where we had no contestant race. I was corrected and informed that the last three election cycles had no competitive races to them, which would show that if we're not getting any interest at the $7,200 fee, then we obviously would get very little or no interest, as Mr. Golfen had pointed out in 2007, with people from the community coming up, serving, and being compensated for their efforts to the board. So I think we're sending the wrong message and going in the wrong direction. And that coming from me is an oddity, because three times in my 18 years on the board, I've asked this question about reducing pays, and for some reason, can't seem to get it to go either. Thank you.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
Yeah, I, I just want a point of clarification. I don't think there have been three elections uncontested. I think just the one last April was the first time.
I was uncontested. Well, the last one, but two times ago I was. I had an opponent, so did-
Last time, 2018, 2019.
So did Kathy.
2017.
Oh, I thought you meant-
You'll have three election cycles.
Okay. Well, once again, we're in the, we're in the question phase, and this particular bill, the mayor, as you know, is not here this evening, and he did, we did talk about this amongst the other items on the agenda tonight, he did have some content to pass along, he's not here to do that. I've got some thoughts on it as well, but they're certainly not questions. And by the next meeting, we should all be able to take part in the conversation about it. And without any other further questions, let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Bill 6232. Mr. City Attorney, will we please have the first reading?
Bill Number 6232, first reading. An ordinance approving an agreement with the Office of State Courts Administrator and amending Chapter 125 of the Code of the City of Brentwood relating to court costs in the municipal division.
And the synopsis for 6232, this allows for an agreement with Missouri Office of State Courts for implementation of the Show Me Courts automation software, and imposes a state-mandated court automation fee of $7 per court case to help cover that. The ordinance addresses not only the automation fee, but also cleans up some code items, housekeeping matters that no longer fit with recent statutes, case law, or court rules. Does anybody have any questions regarding Bill 6232? Alderman Leahy.
Thank you. I guess the question is to the City Administrator, if I may, am I not correct that we currently charge a $35 court fee for things that come through the municipal court at present? And if I'm not mistaken, the way the-
I'm going to have to verify that, I'm keeping through the memo.
I would like you to, and since we don't have to do it tonight, we can work on it. But as I read this bill, this bill only totals up to $33.50 court fee with the $7 fee included. So I'm curious as to the, where we are, as to what the real court fee would be with this passing. The other question I have is, we currently use Regis, I think is who we're using?
That's correct.
Would this reduce the Regis fees that we pay each year for them, and does that then pick up?
From what I understand, Regis would go away, and OSC would take its place.
So we would have a shift in bills on that?
Right.
And the $7 would help cover that change? Or is there a programming and updates in all of this operating fee that we should also be looking at? $7 goes to the state. Goes to the state, but if the city of Brentwood is tying into this, we incur additional cost of connecting and operating that system, do we not? I do not know.
I don't know the answer to that.
That's what I'm trying to get thing. I know we're doing it on Regis, that we incur a cost. I'd like to know if by hooking into this, is there an additional operating cost that comes back to the city? I think you will find, by the way, and I don't mean to contradict the City Administrator, but I do not think the city's dealings with Regis will end. Regis, among its services-
This is one of many.
Provided a court software, and this will replace that. But Regis has a variety of other services, including critical criminal information database that the city still, and the police department, and the court will continue to rely on.
This is just one of many.
Could you evaluate whether the Regis bill will drop, and that this new service may pick up that slack, or would we be increasing an incurred cost, is what I'm looking for? We could certainly do that. I will tell you that what this ordinance provides is doing- Makes us conform to the state. No, not just conform to the state, do what the state says we must do.
Okay.
We have to comply, and there's a deadline within the memo whereby the city has to have approved this ordinance.
I think that's a March 19th date or something of that nature.
Right. And I should also note that Judge Dignam sends his apology and wasn't able to be here tonight, but intends to be here at the next meeting to answer the questions you may have.
Thank you.
Other questions? Alderwoman Sims?
Just to put an accent on it, so in order to comply with the laws that apply to municipal courts, we got to pass this ordinance, right?
This is, this is a first reading tonight.
The only question I have.
Eventually, we have to pass it.
You have the option to vote no, but what we'll do then, I have no idea.
Got it.
And, any other questions? All right, before we get on to citizen comments, in recognition of our esteemed guest who is in our chambers this evening, earlier we did have a resident comment on the first citizen comment about the Better Together topic, and I tried to cobble, I miserably tried to cobble together a explanation of the freeholder effort on behalf of the Municipal League, but I'm hopeful that our guest will be able to help us with that. And with that said, now is the time for public comment. Anybody who has anything for the Board of Aldermen, please come forward, give us your name and address, and you have at least three minutes.
Actually, I thought I was having a good night, I might be.
Okay.
That actually means the other meetings were well-attended. My name is Pat Kelly, I'm the Executive Director of the Municipal League of Metro St. Louis, and as you know, a proud resident of the city of Brentwood. I'm here tonight, really, I hope I can take a few more minutes than the three-
Absolutely.
-to talk about the initiative that the, was unanimously passed by the membership of the Municipal League a couple weeks ago, and address why we think this is so important. The league took the initiative, or voted to start an initiative petition for the formation of the Board of Freeholders, or of electors, as it's more, should be called. This process is actually a process that is in our Missouri State Constitution, specifically for St. Louis City and County, to formulate governmental structures or regional issues, a process by where the Board of Freeholders can make a recommendation, and then ultimately, that recommendation goes before the voters, and then is voted on by St. Louis City and County residents only. The- The, if we are successful, which we will be in collecting 15,000 signatures for St. Louis County and 5,000 for St. Louis City, the process is then the mayor of St. Louis and the county executive must appoint nine members to the Board of Freeholders within 10 days. The governor has to appoint one, so it'd be a 19-member board, at which point that Board of Freeholders then must have their first meeting within 30 days. And then that starts a 12-month clock ticking of the Board of Freeholders meeting in public session in order to formulate any kind of plan that they may present to the voters of St. Louis. The reason that the league, the executive board felt that this was important is this process is the, the public process that's going to allow the residents of St. Louis city and county to have input in a transparent, open forum on the governmental structure of St. Louis County as we go forward. We don't believe that the residents of St. Louis County and St. Louis City have had that opportunity at this point. So that's the, the primary initiative here. You, as a board, voted last year, along with 54 other municipalities in St. Louis County, adopted a resolution in opposition to a statewide vote on local issues. And so our goal here is to bring through the Board of Freeholders, bring to a public forum and debate some of the things that are being proposed in the Better Together Plan to really show the impact that that's going to have on local government. So let me step back one more second and finish the process for the Board of Freeholders. So over that 12-month period, the Board of Freeholders can, can recommend, recommend a plan. If they do that, they could do that in six months or they could do it in 12 months. But if they do that, then that plan has to be public for 90 days before they can set a special election date. It's not, it can't be on another election. It has to be a special date. It'd be only St. Louis city and county, or obviously. And then, but that date cannot be 70 days prior to or after a general election. So really, the idea that we would actually be able to get, have an election before November of 2020 is very, very slim. But it's going to send two, two messages. One, it's going to give the residents of St. Louis County and the city a voice in this discussion, whereas we don't have that right now. It's also going to show the outstate people that there is a process in place for St. Louis and St. Louis County to, to make these decisions and to determine their own outcome. They're being told right now that the initiative that Better Together is proposing has to go to a statewide vote. And on one hand, that is true because they want to change the Constitution. But their plan could also go through the Board of Freeholders process and do the exact thing, the same things that they want to do, they just wouldn't be constitutional changes. Or actually, Kevin would correct me. They couldn't do everything they're trying to do because some of the things they're actually doing is actually stealing. And so they wouldn't be able to do that without the Constitution. And, and I say that because it really is, it is true. They're using our Constitution as a means, in really a perverted way, to take away the rights of the residents of St. Louis city and county. They're going to take the tax dollars that were approved by the residents of the city of Brentwood for the use in the city of Brentwood under the laws of the state of Missouri, and they're going to take that money and use it in other places in St. Louis County where they desire for it to be used. If Better Together's proposal is successful, I won't go through the whole thing, but I will tell you municipalities will not exist as, as you understand municipalities. Brentwood will become a district. Its primary functions will be parks, trash, and fire department because you have a fire department, for as long as you can keep it. The money that you're going to need to run those departments, you're going to have to pass a property tax in order to fund them. And they will supposedly, it says that they'll, they'll allocate back to the cities after you submit your annual budget to the new Metro St. Louis for approval, they will submit money back to the municipalities to pay back, or their districts, to pay back their debt. Which to me is the only reason they're leaving the districts in place is so that they can have a means for paying back their debt. But at the end of the day, for the majority of municipalities in St. Louis County, they're going to become a glorified parks department. The other two things I think is not only with this statewide vote are they circumventing the rights and by diluting the voters, by diluting the votes in St. Louis County, our ability to, to control our own destiny by going to a statewide vote. They're doing it in the future as well. Under this proposal, the county executive and the mayor of St. Louis will design the new charter for the new metropolitan St. Louis. That charter will be approved by a board that they pick. It will never go to a vote of the residents of St. Louis city and county. And in order for, in the future, the residents to change that charter, it will need a two-thirds majority vote. This charter will be written in stone. A two-thirds majority, majority vote on a population of 1.3 million is, is just unheard of. And so by design, they're circumventing the ability of the residents of St. Louis city and county to, to even change something in the future if they don't like what is being shoved down their throat today. So what we're asking, what you have there, what I gave to you is on the front page are talking points for the initiative petition. We want this to be a grassroots effort. You know, we don't have millions of dollars to pay for collection of signatures. The Better Together proposal, they'll use a company to collect signatures throughout the state. They're going to spend about $8 million collecting signatures. It's about five or $6 a signature is what it costs to have that done. And they've got 190,000 rough signatures that they need to collect. So this grassroots effort, what we're asking is for, as elected officials and any other volunteers, this petition will be, actually be up on our website. We're asking that while you're going around knocking on doors, running for campaign, I think the future mayor should still have to do that, even though he's running unopposed. My first term, I knocked on every door in the city of Brentwood. But, but I really think that there, we're asking that every elected official, whether you're running for election or not, collect at least 45 signatures. You have five pages there. You would need three, fill three. The more signatures we collect, the, the more impact that's going to have and the more clearer message that's going to send that the residents of St. Louis city and county want to have a say in this decision. We, we want to be way, way above that minimum of 15,000. We, as, as elected officials and residents of St. Louis County, we should be able to get 50,000 signatures easy. And I really mean that. I mean, if, if you're out and every elected official and other volunteers that have already come forward saying they want to do this, we, we should be well over 50,000 by the time we get done. The, I want you to, to notice on the petitions, there's, the very last one is a petition for the city of St. Louis. It's a little bit different because it goes to the election board in the city of St. Louis. So if you run into a resident that is a resident there, you can have them sign that one. The first question you want to ask somebody when you're approaching them is, are you a registered voter in the city of, in the St. Louis County? Because at the end of the day, you're going to put your name on that. You need to take it, once you have a completed sheet, you need to take it to a notary and then sign it and put your address in front of the notary at the bottom of the page and have the notary fill out the rest of it. Then these pages need to be returned to the league office and we'll collect them all. We're hoping to have this done at no later than April 15th. Our last big push, if we need to, will be at the polls at the April election. We'll be looking for volunteers to go into the city and stand at the polls for their primary in March. And, and again, the same type of initiative, we're working with organizations in St. Louis City. So I know I've taken more than my three minutes. This is, if we want to maintain what we believe are valuable organizations that provide quality services to residents, we need to really work together and we need your help to get this done.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Well, we've got a couple of questions coming your way, but if you could, in layman's terms, there has, maybe the elephant in the room is a gentleman whose last name begins with an S and seems to be quite notable in the state and maybe financing this effort. People want to know, how does someone like that or someone who backs this group, how do they stand to benefit? What's the, what's the benefit?
Well, you know, I feel really comfortable here, so I can be sarcastic like I used to be, right? So really, it's, it's all being driven by Rex Singfield. I mean, if Rex Singfield wasn't there, this would not be happening. But the, the reality of it is, is really two perfect storms have come together. It is, for, for whatever reason, and, and I know one reason, but it's not important, Rex Singfield's goal is to get rid of the earnings tax in St. Louis City. The other organization that has been wanting significant change for a long time has been Civic Progress. They have wanted to get rid of the St. Louis City government for a long, long time because they see that as a downfall to St. Louis City, thus St. Louis city and county. So you bring these two opportunities together at the same time. So now you have Rex Singfield, who will spend anything. He's already allocated $20 million for their statewide campaign. Civic Progress has agreed to pitch in another $5 million. I can guarantee if they need another 10 or 15, Rex will do it. They're going to spend every dime that they want to on this campaign to get the outstate voters to support this initiative. The, the, the way the structure is going to work is they're going to take the earnings tax for 10 years and they're going to use that specific, if this goes through, they'll use that to, to pay down the city's debt. $870 million in debt. Once that is paid off, then they're going to eliminate the earnings tax. In the meantime, where are they going to get the $140 million for the earnings tax? Well, it's coming from the municipalities. This isn't rocket science. It's, it's what I said, to be honest with you, when I took this job, because I was so frustrated with what they were doing, I applied for this job, I should say. Because they were telling everybody at that time, oh, you know, we're just worried about the inefficient communities. It's not the Brentwoods, it's not the Kirkwoods. But if you really saw what they were trying to do, they didn't care about the little, they needed the money. This is all about tax reform and money. It has nothing to do with social justice. At the end of the day, some of the things they're saying they're going to do, they're never going to be able to do. Okay? So this is about redistribution of the taxes in St. Louis County. So cities like Brentwood that don't have a property tax, they're going to have to have a property tax. And at the end of the day, I think ultimately, it won't be, you won't be able to come up with enough property tax for the fire department and they'll form a district with the municipal fire departments is what they'll do. But the residents will really pay for it then because the district's property or the district firemen are paid much higher wages than the municipal departments are. And then at the end, then you're left with Brentwood being a parks department for St. Louis, this new metropolitan St. Louis, so.
With my apologies to other members and residents, the public who'd like to speak, you will get a chance. This is an unusual opportunity for the board to be able to interact with a key person in, in this particular topic and Alderman Plufka.
So you mentioned two efforts to accomplish, to do, to do what you're doing. You don't think you're going to have everything in place or be ready for a vote to be taken prior to November of 2020. There's just not enough time to get all that done. But you said you hope to persuade and you hope to approach, is any part of this an effort at some point to approach Better Together and say, look, we'd like you to alter your plan to some extent? Or are they not, they're not really interested in altering that plan, are they? Or?
No, they, and I, I, you know me, I could go on and on and on. I will tell you, the Better Together, since their formation, and we have documentation, I'd be more happy with it, has refused to let the municipalities participate in this process. Because their goal was outlined when they created their name. And this has been their initiative all along. And so they wouldn't have, through the process, they didn't want us to be involved because they wouldn't, didn't want to have to answer the questions that we would ask.
So the, so my, my point in bringing up this question is that what you pressed out to us today and what you hope people will sign by the thousands as we approach this effort is an effort to try to persuade the hearts and minds of the folks that are going to be voting on this, probably on a statewide initiative in towns like Nixa and Joplin and other places that have nothing to do with St. Louis and probably couldn't care less about this process that we're going through. But the effort is to try to raise awareness and, and to promote, at least with some people who might be voting, who have no vested interest in this, to try to persuade them that this is not popular, to the extent that it's not popular with the folks that it's actually going to affect.
Right. And it shows them that there is a process in place, but hopefully, I mean, I hope, I mean, as a St. Louis County resident, that by going through the Board of Freeholders, we will be able to come up with solutions. We're not, the league does not have a plan because we feel that that plan should be developed by the residents of St. Louis city and county. But I think there's a lot of good people out there that really could have some good input, but they haven't been given that opportunity yet.
Just not on the backs of the cities.
Right. Well, because, yeah, exactly. You know, and, and, you know, but, but Better Together had an agenda and it wasn't hard to see. You know, and, and we can dispute their numbers. We got a university-produced report that shows that they're inaccurate, but people don't care about that. So that's why we need this public forum where we can raise these questions in a public forum and really have that voice that says this, you're wrong about this. You know, for instance, just, just look at the police alone. You know, there's 1,300-plus municipal police officers in St. Louis County. That's larger than St. Louis County's force and that's larger than St. Louis City's force. How are they going to replace all those positions and save money? I can tell you one way they said it. Lita said it. She goes, when somebody asks, well, will they come to this new department and make the wages that they're making today? Oh, no, they're going to have to come in at the level of the, of the metro police department. So they're going to expect your officers for the city of Brentwood to take a $15,000, $20,000 cut in pay.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alderman Demmett.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Pat, first of all, I applaud the effort of, of your group and, you know, taking the lead on this because I think obviously it's very important. I've read Appendix X or F to the, to the report and it's, it's very frustrating when you read it and the obvious effects of it clearly there. I, I agree completely with your, your description of the, of the result, if that thing goes through as, as proposed right now. When I, when I looked and I saw that the, we'd lose our police department, we'd lose our public works department, that's a huge problem for me. You know, the, today when I was coming to work, I got a call from my security company, Interface Security, said, you've got an alarm going off at your house. And I said, I know what happened. I didn't get out in time when I set the alarm. And so they said, we went ahead and dispatched the police. And I said, oh, I wish you hadn't done that because I know I'm going to get charged for that by the city. But, but I, you know, I was at my house within five minutes and there wasn't one, but there were two police officers there. I would venture to say, you're not going to find that in a lot of other places. And the, the idea that we're going to, we stand to lose that really does concern me greatly. And with the public works department, same thing. You know, I, I know we all have received questions, complaints from our residents about the sidewalk repairs or street repairs or tree, you know, all these, all these types of things that fall under the, the jurisdiction of public works. You know, we've had these snow events and we see how quickly the streets are being plowed. I'm real concerned what's going to happen once we lose that public works department. Having said all that, I was planning on attending the meeting Wednesday night. Was that simply to, to get this?
Go over that, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And I was, I actually forgot a couple of the key things that I think this will hit home as well. If this goes through, all of your employees become, immediately become employees of Metro St. Louis. All of your assets belong to Metro St. Louis. Your reserves, your city hall, your police department, your, your fire department, all become assets of Metro St. Louis. You, as a municipality, you become a district. You relinquish all of your rights to their new 33-member board. If you make the majority of them unhappy, they can say, no more Brentwood, just by a vote. That'll be in their new charter.
Alderwoman O'Neil.
All right. That, that's taking our assets. My question, from what I've read, is that nothing's been addressed in terms of taking over liabilities. That if we're involved with Brentwood bound and we're, we're looking at 70-plus million to put ourselves in debt to create this, what would happen if this goes to a district to pay that off?
So if you take them at their word, they said, and I think it's one of the reasons, and I've done this four times tonight, so I'm, I'm... and I've done this four times tonight, so I'm, I can't remember if I said things here already. If you take them at their word, what they say is, if the city has funds that are designated for indebtedness, that they will, once you submit your budget, they will reimburse the city for that. They haven't really addressed it if you've done it through general revenue. Okay? So if you had a bond issue that the residents passed a economic development sales tax for that purpose, then supposedly you will get that money back. I think one of the primary reasons they're keeping the districts, keeping Brentwoods, is only for the, for the, the primary reason is to pay back the debt that they have. So that they keep them in place and then primarily for that, right? You know, but, yeah, so that would be, so supposedly you're going to get reimbursed for the indebtedness that the cities have, right?
Other questions? Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for being here and Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate it, and we really do need your help. We need to work together to get this initiative passed and, and really the more signatures, the better. I can't stress that enough. Thank you.
For your time. And with my apologies again, now if there's anyone else who'd like to come forward, now would be the opportunity. We have our opportunity for citizen comments continuing. Please. Now would be the time.
I'm Greg Rinders, 2007 Park Ridge. I'm here today as a member of the Brentwood Bound Community Task Force. There should be absolutely no question in anybody's mind with the near shot of this microphone that Brentwood Bound includes the opportunity for redevelopment on that Manchester corridor. Our display boards at the open house, I'll read these as follows so that we're, we're on the record here. Revitalize an underutilized area of the city by creating an opportunity for the development of the entire Manchester Road corridor. These are all on our public website, on the city's website, by the way. We have a brochure that says, Development Opportunities on Manchester Road. Page one. The city of Brentwood invites you to explore this exciting development opportunity on the Manchester Road corridor west of Hanley to Brentwood Boulevard. That's phase one and phase two. Goes on to say, this area was identified as an opportunity area in the city's comprehensive plan. This isn't new to the city. We know we had major citizen vetting of our new comprehensive plan, so this is not new. There are presentations made to this board by the mayor in the mayor in November and also in January. Slide two of the mayor's presentation. Brentwood Bound Redevelopment Plan. Two slides later. Brentwood Bound Project Area Tax Revenues After Redevelopment. Two slides later. Brentwood Bound Conceptual Redevelopment Plan. So let's not make any mistake when we talk about this to anybody in the community, whether it's businesses in that phase one and phase two or the surrounding areas, there's an opportunity for development being keyed up and it's critical that phase one and phase two take place. So hopefully, we can put that whole discussion around, is there redevelopment opportunity or not? There certainly is. We've been transparent on this since day one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to come forward and address the board? Now would be the opportunity. And absent those, do we have any aldermatic response for any of the comments we've heard this evening? And our next item is, before we get to the recess and closed meeting, been asked to remind everyone that the next scheduled Board of Aldermen meeting normally would have been February 18. That's President's Day. City offices will be closed. The Iserina will be open for business. Regular trash pickup schedule that week. And we'll have our meeting on the following day, the 19th, 7 o'clock here in chambers. And now we'll invite a motion for.
I think a motion that we moved to closed session under legal revised Missouri statutes, Chapter 610.021, subsection 1, Real Estate. Chapter 610.021, subsection 2, and Personnel. Chapter 610.021, subsection 3, and adjourn from that executive session.
Motion and a second. And we have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Dimmitt?
Yes.
Alderman Kramer?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neill? Alderman Plufka?
Yes.
Alderwoman Sims?
Yes.
Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
And this meeting stands in recess until just after 9:00 PM. We'll meet in the conference room for the closed session.